I'd like to call our town meeting to order. My name is Tom Daley, I'm your moderator, again. I'd like to ask you all, please, to stand for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands- One nation, under God, indivisible- With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. This is usually when I ask for a moment of silence and we all need to think about the fact that we're allowed to gather like this, govern ourselves, very amateur, but that's the way we know that we're governing ourselves. Throughout the state of Vermont, folks are meeting, conducting business, so on and so forth. These town meetings are a real sense of community, a real integral part of our community, and with that, I'm not going to ask for a moment of silence, but what I am going to do is ask each one of you to turn to whoever's next to you, introduce yourself, if you don't know each other. Say hello, and that's a-
I know you.
Kenny? How do you know it? I've seen some people here. Get to be few people every year. You know that one was supposed to be four. Donnie Peters would stand in ways.
Well, here's the meeting.
That's great, you know, that's something different than what I usually do, and I'd really like to take credit for it, but on my way out the door, my wife said to me, instead of the moment of silence, I should do that. So, talk about community. Okay, introductions. The, I want to introduce our select board, Tim Skoggins, our chair, Art Whitman, the vice-chair, Ken Harrington, Tony Krulikowski, and Joe Barber, members. Over here is our town administrator, David Kiranen, Richard Bump, who's taking the minutes, as he does every year. Back there, town clerk, Marlene Hall, treasurer, Melanie Dexter, over here, zoning administrator, Shelley Stiles. The DRB Development Review Board, the chair is Tom Hunchrick, and the members, Michael Bidde, Michael Day, Chris Panesi, our planning commission, Chris Williams, Mike Foley, Mike Chianowski, Naomi Miller. The Department of Public Works, the foreman, Michael Yanati, his crew, Tim Gully, Ron Jennings at Legacy, Eric Sanquist, and Dave Worthington. Our fire department, Chief Joe Vatican, and all of his volunteers. Our retired state rep, Alice Miller, our new state rep, David Durfee, and then collectively all of our town officers, listeners, auditors, trustees, justices, appointees, and committee members, all of you that are those, please stand up, because we'd like to recognize you and give you a hand. Thank you. All volunteers, great. Almost all volunteers. Okay, housekeeping. Fire exits here, there, out the back, restrooms in the back, or in the hallway, out in that I don't know if there are any non-voters mixed in, in the audience. If there are any non-voters, you can't speak, you can't vote. If things get rocking and rolling, and we're yaying and naying and all that, don't say anything. Those registered voters, you know who's next to you, and they're not registered, if they say anything, sharp elbow in the ribs, that's what we do each year, rather than make them go stand in a corner somewhere. That's what we used to do, years ago, we had a roped-off area. It's pretty crazy. Let's see, when you're called upon, you're going to address the chair, please use the microphone. We are live tonight with Cat TV, Facebook channels, so on and so forth. Beck, the representative from Cat TV, the technician that's running the show for that. When we get to business, articles will be moved and seconded. I'll state the article, I'll ask for a motion in a second, then we can discuss, debate, comment, so on and so forth, and then vote on it. You can amend articles, things of that nature. If there's something you want to do, and you're not sure how to do it, please just ask me. The formalities of motions and secondes and all that sort of stuff, that's what I'm here for. You don't have to remember all that stuff. If there's something you're trying to do, you want to make a change or something like that, ask me. Just say what you want to do, and we'll go through the process with you. I think that I need now, to get us started, we always start with reading the warning. We haven't read the warning here in years. The warning is on pages 13 to 17 in your town report. I usually ask for a motion to dispense with, motions made to dispense with the reading. Do I have a second? Anybody object to that? Okay, I'm going to dispense with the reading of the, the full reading of the warning, it's here, if you want to see it. At this point, we're going to be turning it over to Tim, legislative reports. Do I need Alice to come up? Is that what I want to do? Or Tim, you'll call it.
I'll call it. Oh, she's already here.
There you go.
So, this year, like every year, for the past 22 years, we've heard a legislative report from Alice Miller. This is the last time we're going to get to have this privilege.
That's what you think.
There's a lot of people that are going to miss you, including the select board. And you have served this town very well, and for a very long time. Have a couple of things for you. First off, I would like to present to you a resolution passed by the select board, in honor of your service. And I better put on my glasses. This is a resolution by the Shafsbury Select Board on the occasion of Alice Miller's retirement from the Vermont Legislature. Whereas Alice Miller has represented the Bennington III District, including the town of Shafsbury, in the Vermont House of Representatives for 22 years, and whereas Alice has also served four years on the Shafsbury Select Board, sometimes concurrently with her legislative service. And whereas Alice devoted her life to public service as an educator, working for the Red Brick School, the Brattleboro School District, the Vermont Department of Education, and Bennington College. And whereas during her public service career, Alice was devoted to protecting our most vulnerable citizens, including children, the disabled, veterans, and the elderly. And whereas Alice proved herself a tireless advocate for children, adults, in the fields of education and job training, working hard to support and obtain funding for the local Career Development Center and our local schools. And whereas Alice has served with boundless energy, enthusiasm, integrity, and dedication, and grace. Whereas Alice always has a smile and a kind word for everyone she meets. And whereas, in the course of being elected eleven consecutive times, Alice knocked on every door in this town more than once. Therefore, be it resolved that the Shafsbury Select Board, on behalf of the people of Shafsbury, express its deep appreciation to Alice for her decades of service, and wishes her peace and happiness in retirement and future endeavors. Thank you. Before I turn it over to you, one other thing, because that was too many words to put on a plaque, we also have this, which says, "Presented to Alice Miller for 22 years of dedicated service as state representative, we thank you." Presented by the Shafsbury Select Board, March 4th, 2019. We're not done. There are other people that just are dying to say wonderful things about you. And some of them brought pastries. Karen Mellinger, I believe you would like to say something.
Sure, I'd love to say something. Can I put it up there?
Yes.
This is all, she's very surprised by this. You thought we'd let you go away, wouldn't it?
What I'm doing, yes, I did.
So, I've known Alice for 38 years, right?
It's not over.
And, no, 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 we're just starting. And for about 20 of those years, I think I have worked with her, when I was on the school board, and on the select board, and you were in the State House. Alice, and I've also helped on Alice's campaigns. She did have 11 of them. A few of them were pretty tough campaigns, but she loved every one of them, right? Alice was a unique campaigner. She felt like she had to talk to everybody. And if you worked on her campaign, and I see a lot of folks out here who did, Meg Delena being one of the ones in charge, Alice would be so energetic, and she would go off for an afternoon, say, "I'm going to, I'm going to hit Hidden Valley." And you think, wow, there's a lot of houses on Hidden Valley, but Alice can do it. She'd come home, full of enthusiasm, "I had a great day, I loved it, it was wonderful." How many houses did you get to, Alice? About five. But I had such a great time! And that says everything about Alice. She loved her job. She loved Shafsbury, because she loves the people of Shafsbury. And she has worked so hard for us, I saw it through my board work, anytime we had issues, and we needed money, and the big one was the landfill. You remember that whole, that was back in 2004, '05? Alice and Bill Pennybaker worked to find something that would help this town. We were told, "No money, you'll have, there's nothing for you." We needed about another $400,000 to cap that landfill, and we had to. So I got a call from Alice one day, "You've got to come up here. Dick Sears is on board." She brought me down to the bowels of the State House, and she had been working with some of the legislative-
Lawyers?
That's right. And she said, "Look at, look what we've found." And there was some little thing in statute, and somehow Alice got it together-
There's $40,000 in it.
Well, you ended up with $400,000, and, you know, and that, I have only known Alice to be passionate, full of energy, and love for the people of this town, and who she was representing. So, after 22 years, Alice, we all thank you. And I hope that folks, I know a lot of you, I think, are here just because of Alice. So, please join us in the back at the end of the meeting, maybe it won't go too long, but, and have some cake and coffee, and a chance to personally thank Alice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Alice.
Well, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, I love Karen Mellinger. We have been friends for such a long time, and she was on what I called my A-team, when I was running in really tough races years ago. You hear me? But I have to tell you, this isn't about me. I'm not leaving. I'm not saying so long. You need to say, "Welcome home" to me. I've come home. And I'm sort of glad to be here. It's a bit of an identity crisis I'm going through, but I'm so pleased that I have a replacement who is just first-rate, where is he? David Durfee? There he is. And we had such, Tim Skoggins ran, we had two really exceptional people running for office. We have, those people are in office now, and those people on the school board, on the select board, in our community, are doing extraordinary things. But it's not only today, it's also yesterday. We mustn't forget the people who were there for us, I haven't, in a very big way, and in a very big way served our community. Who am I talking about? I'm talking about Bernard Whitman, great friend of mine, great supporter, wonderful man, bought grain for my horses from him when I was 11 years old. Roberta Haynes, lived in Shafsbury forever, very active in politics, talked me into running. She and Barbara Buckspowm, Joyce Scary, Little Room in Cole Hall, Audrey Jones, wonderful people, talked me into doing this. Who else was on that team? Arthur and Betty Ferris. I don't know if you all know them, but if you don't, you really missed out. Tremendous doctors, took care of all the vulnerable people in our community, gave me firsthand advice. Junior Harwood, by jingles, by jingles, "You better run and win," he said to me. And I would sit and talk to him about fish and wildlife for hours at his home. Tony Mizola, same thing. Shafsbury sob, used to be named. Funny, telling me stories, telling me I was going to win, telling me I was going to lose, "I better get busy, I'm not doing enough, get out there." Very wise fellow. Adamon the Living, Art Whitman, where are you? He never voted for me. Biggest mistake he ever did. But I'll tell you this, I've had the best conversations with him on politics, on issues. He cares so much about this community. Look what he does in this community, he deserves it. Every event with his tractor, with driving kids around with, on it with hay in the tractor, pulling them around, all kinds of things. The lines clear. And, and so, just so much more. Be here all night, telling you what he does. And the conversations with him, even though we were on opposite ends of lots of issues, were so civil, so decent. Come to Montpelier, sit, talk, just wonderful to see him there. Won't forget it, Art. Lon McClintock, my lawyer, my friend, my deep friend. How helpful you have been to me, so helpful, in so many ways. I'm not telling these people how. Tyler Rash, great writer, editor, everything I wrote went to Tyler Rash before I sent it out to edit. Sent it back, made it really look good. I called him my brother, we've been friends forever. I introduced him to his wife, and I sold him his first dog. Ellen Winter, there she is, came to my house during campaigns, along with so many other people, Ray Brown, Ellen Verrick, and so many more, stuffing envelopes, helping me get out mailings, over and over and over again. Barth and Betty Vander Els, great thinkers, served on the select board with him, he helped too, stuffing envelopes, doing all kinds of things to get my campaign underway. Betty Benedict, great lady, in her 90s now, probably couldn't make it today, but wish she had, so I could thank her. I will go to her home and thank her personally, just an extraordinary lady, chair of the school board for years. Sheila Mann, my treasurer, for years and years and years, great mathematician, taught at the CDC for years. Thank you so much, Sheila, for all you did for me. Judy Stratton, are you here tonight? We've got to get her here. Marlene Hall, are you here? Phenomenal town clerks, every question you ask them about anything, they have the answer. So helpful and so kind. They're educators, they teach you how things work. Not a Shafsbury resident, but very helpful to me, was Laura Block from Bennington, wife of Dr. Block, tremendously helpful in my campaigns. Bill Fisk. I'm not going to tell them what you did for me, but it took you a whole day, and you lost your salary for that day in the doing of it. But I don't want to get too political here, so I'm not going to mention what it was. We'll whisper it to people later. I want to thank you for that, and I will never forget it. So many more people, I could, I have lists here, names, people. So, what I have to say to you, this is about you. My work was about you, listening to you, hearing from you, knowing what your concerns, your issues, your problems were. That was my job. I loved every minute of that. So, as Betty Ferris said to me one day, when things were really looking tough in one of my elections, she said, "Listen, Alice, don't give up on Shafsbury. We have the best people in the world here, and so we do, and I thank you so much." Oh, wait a minute, are you going to bring David up now?
I am.
I have a present for him.
Oh, okay.
I have a present for David. Hey, David? I have to iron it, but, here's my legislative T-shirt.
Yeah, in fact, I was going to start by saying, I've learned that following Alice is a tough act, and Alice, you are much missed in the State House, won't come as any surprise, but I regularly have people ask, "How is Alice, how's Alice doing?" And I've mentioned to some of you that people, people want to know who I am, there are a lot of new people in the State House, and, "Where are you from?" And I say, "Shafsbury." And inevitably, the response is, "Oh, you're the new Alice." So, now I just say, "I'm the new Alice," and they know where I'm from. Yep. I'm going to try and keep my comments brief, I don't know how much time you allotted me tonight.
Eight minutes, is that what we did?
If it runs anywhere close to eight minutes, just give me the, let me know. So, so I've been in Montpelier for eight weeks now, we started in, in early January, and the session runs every week until now, and then we take a week off for town meeting, and then we'll start up again next week, and it'll go for another two months or so, until, until mid-May. And the folks who tend to think that big government is not good, might be encouraged, we haven't, we haven't done a whole lot, we haven't passed a lot of legislation yet of this, this term. I think there've been maybe 10 bills that have gone through the House. However, I will say that I've been told that there's a record number of new bills that have been filed, close to 800, between the, the two House, the House and the Senate. And that seems like a lot, to me anyway, and apparently it is a lot. So, there may be things coming down the line. I'm on the healthcare committee. Each, each House member is assigned to one committee, and I asked to be on the healthcare committee, and that's where they put me. So, most of my time has been spent in committee meetings, coming up to speed on the issues that are current right now in Vermont with healthcare. And a lot of that has to do, actually, with the federal healthcare picture, the Affordable Care Act, Obamacare, has been, is still the law of the land, but it's been, it started to be taken apart, sort of piece by piece. And Vermont, a year ago, decided that they would try to shore up any, anything that was done to take ACA apart. We want to make sure that pre-existing conditions remain, and not an issue for people who are trying to get insurance, for example. So, so we've been working on that in the healthcare committee, we've been spending a lot of time talking about mental health issues. I printed up and left a two-sided newsletter at the back of the room, if you didn't have a chance to pick it up, please take one. My contact information is on that, and it talks a little bit more about the work that we're doing in the healthcare committee. I just wanted to mention a few other areas that might be of interest. The school board met earlier tonight, and there was a little bit of conversation about the future of the, of the district. As, as many of you know, we've been talking about merging with Bennington and Poundle and Woodford. Shafsbury voted well over a year ago to, to merge with those districts by about a two-to-one margin, and the process has been playing out slowly. There's a court, the courts have been involved, but at this point, it looks like that merger will go ahead in, at 1st of July. So, there'll be, there'll be a new board, there'll be another set of elections after, after tomorrow, there'll be yet another opportunity for you to vote for the new board members representing Shafsbury, there'll be two of them, two seats anyway to fill at that point. We've been, both Houses of Legislature, the House and the Senate, have been working on lead testing bill for schools. We want to be sure that the water coming in, water, water system is fine, the source of the water is fine, but there is some concern that the building, the plumbing in some of the buildings might be introducing lead into the drinking water. So, there is, there is funding to do that testing. The Senate is trying to iron out exactly what the, the level of lead should be, in much the same way, there's a lot of discussion about how much PFOA in water is, is too much, they're having that same debate right now. Climate change has been much on the mind, I know of a lot of folks in Montpelier, there's been talk about increasing dramatically incentives for electric vehicles. The, the state has ambitious goals for reducing carbon by the middle of the century, and part of getting there would be a lot more electric vehicles, fewer gas-powered vehicles. So, I think there'll be legislation coming out this year that moves that forward. We've, we've done a good job with weatherization, there'll be more, more of that, I believe. Probably what we won't see is a, an increase in the gas tax related to global warming, although a lot of people, and I would put myself in that camp, think that this would be a good step. Politically, it's a little challenging. Interestingly, however, just, I'll mention that when people are asked whether a gas tax that would be dedicated to town highways and roads would be something they're in favor of, people tend to say yes. So, there is a bill that, I'm not sure of what its future is, but it would increase the, the gas tax by four cents, and return all the money to town specifically for use in, in getting the roads improved. There's a lot of concern statewide, and not just in Vermont, but in rural areas across the country, of broadband access. That's, I know that's an issue for many of us here in Shafsbury. I happen to live in an area where we, where we get internet connections, but many of us don't. So, there are, there are discussions going on at committees, there, there is not a simple solution to this. I know the two governors, maybe three governors ago, campaigned on, "We will have broadband to the last mile, every resident of Vermont will have it." The cost is just prohibitive, and it doesn't mean that there aren't solutions, there, there are technological advances coming all the time. So, private-public partnerships are probably the answer, and there's some money going to be available for, for studies. I'm not sure, I know Tim is, is very much on top of this, and town of Shafsbury is probably well ahead, actually, of many other towns in the state. And I should probably mention, too, tax and regulate, if you've heard those words, that's sort of the shorthand for what to do about cannabis. The, the Senate is very interested in legalizing marijuana, and historically, the House has been a little bit slow coming around on that. The Senate, I think, has moved right ahead again this year with legislation that would tax the sale and, and regulate at the same time. I'm not sure- I'm not sure how far it's going to get in the House. And I'd be happy to talk more about that or about any of these issues with any of you. My contact information is on that newsletter. Feel free to reach out at any point, and I'll be staying tonight as well. And I guess I seem to remember Alice having to answer questions after she spoke over the last 22 years. So if that's the way things work, I'm happy to take questions, too, now or later. Seeing none? I'm off the hook. That easy, really? Okay.
Great. Thank you, David. Alice, send one more thing.
David, David, that was really good. I forgot something. Probably lost my momentum, but I want it back. This is really important. I left somebody out who is probably the most significant person in getting me elected for 22 years. Worked day and night, organized, efficient, smart. She's got two PhDs, one in physics and one in chemistry. She just had her knee replaced. She's kind of a mess, but let me introduce you to this Cuban who couldn't get back into her country because of communism, Cuban Castro. Been here ever since, studying, working. Was head of Roche Diagnostics, developed all kinds of great tests with her team in all manners of cancer, heart disease, what have you. But, God, did she help me. Magdalena Sotegi. Stand up if you can.
All right. Thank you. Alice and David. I am going to try, if I can, turn this around so I can look at my slides and still talk.
Before you do that, I want to do one thing procedural.
Sure.
Article one, which is on, I believe, page 13. To hear the reports of the town officers and take action thereon. I need a motion for that, please. How about a second? Okay. Now we're going to hear the reports.
So this is the select board report. So we start out looking at our budget. This year, we're seeing a modest increase in expenses. I would point proudly at the fact that this board, this administration, has been holding the line, a very tight line, on the budget for quite a few years. And this year, we just had to let it creep up a little bit. There's not any one thing that did that. It's just a lot of areas that see inflation. Finally, we had to let those increases sneak through. But as you can see, the budget hardly moved in terms of expenses for quite a few years. So I hope that's appreciated. Next. The accomplishments from 2018. The Department of Works Garage, Department of Public Works Garage is near completion. I'm sure a lot of y'all have seen it out at the landfill. It was nine years in the making. Recall that it was nine years ago that the then-select board commissioned some engineers to look at what to do about Coal Hall. And they said, "Coal Hall, sure, but you've got a bigger problem across the parking lot." And so it only took us nine years to get that taken care of. It's all but done. There's some inside work to do. The final site work, which will include another layer of gravel over the driving and parking areas, that'll have to wait until fall. But it's moving along. And also the new transfer station, which was part of this deal, which by squeezing the budget there and looking at things that we could do to contain costs, we were able to put a new transfer station into that package, which was important because those buildings that were out there were also near end of life. Also, we have been remodeling the second floor of Coal Hall. Coal Hall, as you know, it was nine years ago that we knew we needed to do something about that. Well, we've got that done. We have offices, proper offices with doors where people can have private conversations now on the second floor for the town administrator, the treasurer, and the zoning administrator, and also an area that can be shared by the water department and the cemetery while still maintaining ample meeting space. And it looks ever so much better. I really want to thank our town administrator, David Kiernan, for managing these two large construction projects. That was a lot to deal with all at one time. The next slide is before and after. I'm not sure how well you can see it. But in the before shot, the little one there, you don't have the best view of the cracked plaster and the exposed lath in the ceiling. But believe me, it was there. You can see some of the light fixtures that have been steadily going out for years, which we haven't replaced because they were going to be... They were out of date, and it was going to cost $700 apiece. So it just got dimmer and dimmer in there. Now it's bright and beautiful. The floors were refinished, and they look like new. It's really a space that we can hold meetings in and be proud of. Looking down the road, at the roads. We have a new Department of Public Works foreman in Michael Yanati. We feel like we really did well in snagging him. We stole him from V-Trans. I credit David again with that for keeping his ear to what's going on in the community. And he found out about Michael, who was working for V-Trans and driving to, what was it, Clarendon every day to do his work. He lives in Shaftesbury. When we were able to offer him a job, he was agreeable, and we're agreeable. What he is doing is bringing a real sense of order to the department. And he has got us on an aggressive maintenance schedule that's going to involve really reshaping the right-of-way on a lot of our gravel roads. And it's important for people to realize this is something that has to be done. Brushing, ditching, and re-crowning are part of regular maintenance that we're behind on. Michael's got a real strong plan for getting that done. But you're going to see some changes. And sometimes you might... We're going to have to trim back brush from the road to expose it to sunlight and do things that we realize not everyone's going to be in favor of. If you've gotten used to the tree-lined driveways, that might come as a shock. But what we hope we can do, and Michael and the crew have instructions to do, is talk to the landowners before we go in and change things. So certainly, if you have precious trees that you want to see preserved, contact us ahead of time. Let us know, and we'll see what we can work out. Talking with Michael about the plan. Recall last year, or I don't know if I talked about it at the town meeting, but during the setting of goals last year for the select board, we talked about increasing the spending on the roads. Something like a two-and-a-half-cent tax increase in order to rebuild roads, the gravel roads, to something like a mile a year. We have 50 miles of dirt roads. Even that kind of spending was going to take us 50 years to rebuild the road base and all the roads. Michael has convinced us that to press pause on that plan for a while, give him a chance to get the maintenance schedule going, reevaluate which roads really need road base rebuilt right of way and which ones can better be served with things like ditching and brushing and reshaping. And we're also looking at other technologies. We did a test on Myers Road this last year, where into the mix of the surface gravel was added recycled asphalt shingles. There's a lot of those around. Once they take them off roofs, they don't have a lot to do with them. One of the uses that they're finding for it is mixing it with road gravel and putting it down. So far, it looks to be holding up better than gravel by itself. So that could be something we see more of. As we move forward, we're also looking at Coal Hall exterior and not just the removing of the old garage. That's certainly part of the plan has been since we talked about building a new garage. But also, we're kind of looking at a vision for the whole lot. If we take the garage out, we're talking about looking at the entrance and the staircase. And I'll show a picture in just a minute of what I'm talking about there. But the staircase that goes to the second floor right now, we feel really detracts from the beauty of the beautiful old stone building that is Coal Hall. And so we've got architects looking at how to think about what we do with the lot at Coal Hall when we take out the old garage. And at the very least, we're going to put up a sign. I think it was David again who pointed out, there's no sign that says Coal Hall. There's not even a sign that says 61 Buck Street. Somebody just has to know somehow that that's the town offices. So if we don't do anything else, we're going to put up a sign that says 61 Buck Street, Town Offices for Shaftesbury. We have reserve funds. We hope we'll fund this effort as we get a plan and see how it develops. We'll see how that goes. But right now, there's considerable reserve funds that we can tap to look into doing that. Another big project that we're looking at is replacing the water mains, all the water mains on municipal water in the village. And this is a biggie. This was brought to our attention by our water superintendent, Jim McGinnis. The concrete asbestos pipes that are there are 75 years old. Their estimated lifetime is 75 years. At this point, there's no problem with them. And we hope that remains because what we plan is to replace the mains in stages as we retire other debt that the water department has, that the ratepayers are paying, so that we soften the blow of that. So we'll do it in stages. When debt comes off, we will acquire new debt to replace a piece of the water main network in the village. And the bonds that we're looking at are... They cover over 20 years. So we're looking at doing this over a very long period of time. But we hope by doing it in coinciding with retiring other debt that it will lessen the burden on the water ratepayers in the village. Next. And this, I was just wanting to kind of reinforce that Coal Hall really has a good side and a bad side. And the staircase on the outside is really detracts from the fact that it is a beautiful old stone building, and that's the side that you see when you come up. So we're looking at ways that we might do that. And Dave, who probably thinks about Coal Hall more than anything, has talked about, "Wouldn't it be nice if the entrance to the second floor were back at the front of the church?" And we're thinking about that. It might involve all kinds of changes there, but we're looking at those things. But that's kind of, you know, a good side, bad side of Coal Hall that I wanted to point out. On the economic development front, I have mentioned for quite a while that I've been involved in the SEDS process, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Recall in 2015, there was a Southern Economic Zone report that came out that said the economy of southern Vermont is in trouble. And one of their main recommendations was to create a southern Vermont, two-county, Wyndham and Bennington Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Couple of years were the work, and that has been done. That process is now in place. And they are accepting applications for projects to be certified as vital to this region's economy. What that does is it's a certification that allows entrepreneurs or entities who have projects in economic development to then go to other funding agencies and say, "I am a vital project for this region," and it helps them secure that funding. As David mentioned, another thing that's holding back our economy is lack of internet access. And one of the things that a lot of us, a lot of towns have started to realize is that it's looking less and less like anybody's going to solve that problem for us. I'm encouraged that the legislature is looking at that. But as David said, we've had governors for several years who have promised us internet access, and it hasn't happened. We're not sure what we can do about it. But one of the first things that we want to do about it is find out what the problem is. And so we're, right now, as we speak, conducting a survey of internet access in Shaftesbury. You've probably seen the signs up. There's a button on our website. We're looking for all of you and all of your neighbors to let us know what kind of internet access you have. If you don't have it at all, is it good enough? What kind of efforts you would support the town in doing and trying to extend that. For example, right now, we just, in the last month, found out that the USDA, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, which supports community development in rural towns, has a grant program right now that closes on April 15th that is giving grants to towns to pay people like Comcast to extend their wires to places that they didn't feel was economically viable. These are big grants. The minimum grant is $100,000. The maximum grant is $3 million. I haven't seen this kind of money coming out of the USDA before. I see them at all of these economic development meetings that I go to. They're usually eager to loan money to towns to do things in the way of community development. So the select board is going to be having a conversation in the near term to see if we can gather enough information to put us in a position to argue for some of these funds. I'm hoping we can because I have a feeling it's not money that we're going to see every year. Okay. Now, going to the ballot for tomorrow, talking about some zoning bylaws that we're asking the voters to approve. There's a couple. The first one is on short-term rentals like Airbnb. What we're doing there is we're defining that to be home occupation. Home occupations are already defined in our bylaws. They have rules that say that they are limited in scope, and they do not adversely affect the neighborhood. We don't think there's a problem there. We want to get in front of the problem if it should occur and make sure that, you know, one, that this can still go on. We're not trying to restrict it. We want to allow people to earn this extra income. We also want to make sure that people don't essentially build hotels in rural neighborhoods where they don't belong. So there are some modest rules there that limit the scope of that. The main thing being, it's a home occupation. The other one is motel conversions to rooming houses. And what we've done there is we've defined rooming house and set that up to trigger a change of use of the property. This is not yet an issue here. What I'm talking about is motels along 7A that turn into some sort of permanent housing. But generally, permanent housing, when you convert it from a motel to permanent housing, you don't have things like kitchens. And so it was falling into a gray area in our bylaws. Again, we don't have a problem with this yet. Our main concern is to protect the health and safety of the residents and also to protect the beauty of the neighborhood. There are places where these kinds of conversions have become a blight on the neighborhood. Couple of them in South Bennington come to mind as being really unsightly, quite frankly. And our goal there is to get in front of this. What the change of use does is it triggers the review by the zoning administrator, which triggers a review by the state of the building codes and that sort of thing, so that at least minimal safety and health standards are maintained. The third change to the bylaws is kind of down in the weeds, but there was a... In the front of the new... in the front of the new bylaws that were rewritten a couple of years ago, we introduced a convenience, which was a table of uses, which just said, in these zones, these are the things that are approved as uses that can happen in those zones. There's been some confusion on the DRB about that. There was a tendency for some people to read more into it than what it was. It was meant to be just a summary of what's in the bylaws. Some people were arguing that it seemed to introduce new language into the bylaws. We felt that the simplest thing there was to just take it out. And again, I'd like to thank the, the Planning Commission and our Chair, Chris Williams, for seeing these issues as things that the Planning Commission should address and bring to our attention and let us deal with them before they become problems. And I believe that is all I have, unless there are questions.
Any questions?
It seems to me that the companies to benefit from wider use and availability of broadband are the broadband companies. Why aren't they just coughing the money in installing broadband everywhere?
Yeah, it's economics. The Comcast will tell you that it costs them X amount of dollars to run a wire down a road with six houses in a mile, and that even if everybody on that road bought into Comcast, they would never recoup that investment. So that's, that's why we have that, that problem in, in low-density rural areas.
Why can't you just tell them it's a public service?
Well, if you follow the news closely, you know that we did do that. The last time Comcast was allowed a contract in the state of Vermont, they had obligations to provide service in areas that were underserved. Comcast did not do that. And instead, when their contract came up for renewal, and it was denied by the state of Vermont, they are currently suing the state of Vermont, claiming that their First Amendment rights are being violated by having to build wires where they don't want to.
Another, another argument for competition.
Competition is good. Any other questions?
I'm sorry if this is going to be sort of scattershot. With the Airbnbs, the home occupation, is the owner of the home required to be living there when they're renting out the house?
We did not impose any restrictions like that.
Okay. One of the problems that neighborhood in Arlington was having is that the owners of a house basically never lived there. And it was basically transient housing, meaning it was just rent week after week after week. And it wasn't, because it wasn't used as a residence, then it, it changed the nature of the neighborhood as being residential and created some problems. Typically, a home occupation is occupied by the, the owner of the home. And they can only use a percentage of the space. In this instance, you're taking away all that, and essentially, a person could use that as an income-producing property for, for short-time stays. So the other, the other question I had has to do with the, the budget for the highways. You've reduced gravel by, from 70,000 to 50,000. Salt, from 61,000 to 48. And winter sand from 70,000 to 52. I'm not used to seeing our actual expenses be as low as your budgeting. Could you explain to me why you've really slashed those three items?
Yeah, David, can I defer to you on the, the details there?
Well, this year so far, we've only used about 60% of our gravel budget. And our change in gravel in particular is changing our program with new foreman, now we're going to maintain the roads. A lot of times, we've just gone out and put gravel on the roads. We need to give it to other aspects of addition and trimming trees and making the ground of the road proper. So it's not necessarily to need more gravel. We just upped that last year. And we're finding that, that's really not the solution now that we need here for that part of the gravel. Winter sand and salt have been flat in the last couple of years. We haven't used barlotting for this year yet. And we're almost at the end.
Well, well, this says the actual was 61,000, and you're budgeting 48 for salt. And the actual was 70,000, and you're budgeting 52. So it looks like it's underbudgeted from my perspective. I was just hoping you could clear that up. It says actual fiscal year 2018, and then the budget for 2020 is...
Yeah, accordingly, you're right. You're correct that it was up, but it wasn't over here. It's not normally that high. But anyone just programming up to be high, and we haven't used that amount of addition here.
Okay. And then the other one was the management contract for the solid waste station. It was, the actual was 28,000 in fiscal year 2018. The current fiscal year, it's up to 58. And now I see it's budgeted for 70,000. Why is the management contract going up by almost more than double in two years?
Well, the management contract hadn't been done in five hundred years. And what, what Tammy's facing is increasing salt costs that hadn't been really made up in this contract for quite some time. And so as he needs to do more things to move more materials, the contract just negotiated out, had to go up. It is, it does appear to be a large increase, but it hasn't been touched in, in a long time.
So the management contract includes disposal?
It includes part of the disposal, yes. The recycling that no one pays for, you know, that a lot has been taken care of, there's no market for recycling anymore. There's also the increased cost of trucks, that's a separate place, that's a complete fleet to have the fleet for parking for everything. It doesn't affect us from the, from the transit side, if you want to do it. But there's so much more that goes into the budget than has been in the past in this contract. We just knew, but we didn't go and negotiate with the county for the crisis. So that's what's the budget.
Tom, can I make a motion? Or is now not the time? I don't want to be out of order.
Now, are you on the budget?
Yes.
Wait until we, we take the budget. This article we're on now is just here in town report.
All right. Thank you.
Karen.
I, I also had a question about the, the highway budget. It has more to do with the equipment.
Microphone.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
You know, I'm looking at some of the trucks. I'm wondering, are some of these coming, are we getting new trucks? We have a, you know, the truck number one, the O9 International. We had a fiscal year 18 of almost $17,000 in repairs, I guess. The budget for last year was 2,500, and you're proposing $1,000? And, and I go down the line, and it just seems like it's kind of scattershot in terms of the budget.
Microphone. Come on over to the microphone.
Oh, okay.
This is being broadcast, so it's hard for folks out in D.V. land to hear us without being at the microphone.
All right. The, the way the vehicles are done in highway equipment maintenance, the actual budget line of 1,000 or 2,000, it's just to hold a place so we can credit the money to something. The 90,000 total has been held for a long time, and it is getting a little bit too low. We are addressing this overall problem, because what we've discovered, frankly, is that the vehicles need to be maintained better. And some of the vehicles did require a lot more service than should have been normal. The age of the vehicles, the O9 is scheduled to be replaced this summer. The rest of them are on replacement schedules, but the trucks can last 10 years. We took a couple a little longer. We're also looking at changing the type of fleet we have. Again, this is a part of bringing in a new person from the outside that has a different vision. He was trained differently by V-Trans on how to look at things and how to manage the fleet. And we're looking to reduce the amount of maintenance done in-house, so that goes out, outside, so we have more time to be working on the roads instead of on vehicles. But some of these repairs were expensive. We had one truck that we only bought last year, a used truck, but it had to have quite a, a number of repairs this winter. But overall, I think if you look down at the totals for this year, you can see that number from, from last year, from 18, yeah, that was an extraordinarily high number, which was a driving point into changing the whole way this is, this is viewed. Because we were about 60,000 over in vehicle maintenance repairs last year, from what's budgeted. Now, granted, like I said, that $90,000 line hasn't been changed in a long time. But that was extraordinary and unacceptable. We shouldn't be doing that much. We shouldn't need to do that much repair.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then I will turn it back over to Tom for the budget vote.
Okay, that was the selectmen's report. In your town report, there are reports from all of the other town committees and so on and so forth. It's actually real good reading, very good reading. This first article, to hear the reports of the town officers, officials, and to take action thereon. Some towns act on it by, by voting, some don't. We traditionally have voted. Do any of you have any further questions for the selectmen of the selectmen's report? Or any comments about any of the other town officers' reports? There being none. It's been, motion's been made that we hear the reports and that we accept them, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article two. To determine, shall the select board members each receive an annual stipend of $650? Shall the board of auditors be paid a wage at the rate of $14 an hour? Shall the first and second constable be paid a wage at the rate of $14 an hour? And number four, shall the board of listeners be paid a wage at the rate of $14 per hour? This is a single question. We can divide it and take it one, two, three, and four, or we can take the entire article. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to start with, I need a motion in that format right there, that we determine one, two, three, and four. Motion's been made. Do I have a second? There's a second. Okay. What is your pleasure? Do you want to divide the question and go one, two, three, and four? Or would you like to vote the entire question as a single, discuss it as a single? Lon?
Single item.
Single item, all right? Any questions or debate or concerns or comments? Ready to vote? All those in favor of Article two, as it's been stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article three, shall the town authorize collection of taxes on real or personal property by its treasurer, which are due in hand on or before Friday, November 8, 2019, at 5:00 p.m., or likewise, postmarked no later than Friday, November 8, 2019? I'd entertain a motion. Any second? A motion's been made and seconded. Typically, what this does is it, we have to authorize them to collect the taxes. But it may, the main thing it does for, for the rest of us is it says when we have to pay our taxes. And if we are unable to get to the, to the treasurer to hand them a check, when, when our letter's got to be postmarked, sending it. The date that's proposed is Friday, November 8. Any discussion or questions? Concern about it? You ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor of authorizing the collection of taxes on real or personal property by its treasurer, which are due in hand on or before Friday, November 8, 2019, at 5:00 p.m., or likewise, postmarked no later than Friday, November 8, 2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article four. Shall the town appropriate the sum of $1,960,862 to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2020? The amount of such sum to be raised by property taxes and to be reduced by non-tax revenues and reserve funds. I need a motion.
It's been moved.
It's been moved. How about a second? Got a second. Okay. These are, this is the budget, main reason we come. This is the budget which is on pages 23 to 40 of your Lon.
Yeah, I did want to make a comment.
Come on up, please.
Well, Lon is walking up. I just want to make a comment that, to remind people that the budget total you see warrant tonight does not include the appropriate, community appropriations that you will vote on tomorrow. Those, those amounts, whichever ones approved, are approved, will be added to that budget number.
So just one preface. I understand that we're voting on the entire package, and we're not voting on light items. So during the course of the year, the select board and the town administrator have to figure out how to make the whole thing work. And if something goes over in one place, they have to make it up someplace else to try to come in at the end on budget. With that being said, though, I'd make a motion that we increase the budget by $40,000. And the reason for that is simply, I think, underfunding the salt and the winter sand has gotten us into financial problems in the past. At one point, we were, we were basically telling all the departments not to do any spending because we had an extraordinary amount of ice one particular year. Not snow, but ice. And every time that goes out, the trucks have to go out. And in order to keep the roads safe, you really need to do that. But you can't have it kill everything else that you're trying to do at the same time. So I'm, the basis for the motion is we, I'm afraid we'd be a little bit penny wise and pound foolish if we underfund these particular items. And I think until the road, new road foreman actually has a handle on the entire problem, we ought to make sure that there's enough money there in case we get into a problem with the weather. So I would move, we'd add $40,000 with a recommendation to the select board, that the idea of the money is to make sure we don't underfund the road budget.
You've all heard the motion. Is there a second? This is a, this is a motion to amend the main motion, which is our budget. Do I have a second for the motion by Lon? Got a second, Oliver? Discussion? Ready to vote on the amendment? What you're voting on is to amend the budget, bottom line, by $40,000 with a recommendation that the select board have that money available for the road foreman, for road purposes. We, this is not a line item. We can't do line item vetoes and so on and so forth. We can only vote on the amount of our budget. It's up to the selectmen by statute to, in their discretion, to distribute it amongst the needs of the, of the, the financial needs of the town.
Tam.
Lon.
Can I just make one other point? Just would it affect the tax rate about a penny, if I'm, if I'm correct?
Correct.
So it's not going to have a substantial effect on the overall budget, but it would bring the amount available in line with what we actually spend 2018.
Okay. Yes. Kenny.
I'm confident with the numbers that Dave has given us. And that new salt shed is going to cut down on the amount of salt we have to use. Because when you mix salt and, and sand out in the open, you have to use about three times as much salt. So when we mix... So when we mix the sand in there, you're going to save a lot of salt.
Oliver?
And perhaps this has been addressed somewhere else, but seems like every other year, we've had an article in there to authorize the selectboard to borrow money in anticipation of taxes. We don't have that article, or your hands tied. I know you can move money around, but you can't go to the bank and borrow money without an authorization.
Yeah, we can. That provision, which used to be voted on by each town, is now a matter of state statute, so it's no longer necessary to approve it in the town.
Thank you, Tim.
So we still have an amendment before us to amend the budget by $40,000. More questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. So we've got in front of us now our budget as amended. That's our main motion. It's been made and seconded. How about questions or comments, debate? On the budget, as shown in the, on all those pages in our town report. What did I hear?
Call the question.
Call the question? Okay, that's not debatable. Is there a second? That has the effect of cutting off debate and moves us immediately to voting on the main motion. All those in favor of approving the town budget as presented, amended, to increase it by $40,000, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and it is so ordered. Yeah, we're missing that article, so we're at the end.
That's it.
That's it. Usually, there's something about borrowing money, but no, it's not there. So to transact any other non-bidening business, as legally may come before said meeting at this time. Art, did you want to?
If you're following your program, I'm not on it, because, but being that the moderator is my brother-in-law, and it has its perks. It also has its negative side, too. He made me hug a Democrat last year at this place. But I'd do it again a thousand times, Alice. 2014, I started serving on the select board. And a couple months into our service, I got a call from our chairman, Tim Skoggins. He says, "We got a problem. Margie wants to go back to Maine." I don't know if you remember Margie, but Margie was our town administrator at that time. Margie was probably 98 pounds soaking wet, but every ounce of that was pure energy. She was a go-getter. She was a spitfire. She knew that her job was to make sure that things got done. Tim's exact words to me over the phone that day were, "If we can find somebody as good as Margie, we'll have pulled off a miracle." Well, from then on, it was resumes coming in. We were smitten by a young man. I can't remember what state he was from, but just out of college, a degree in government. Wanted to bring his family, wife and newborn child from out, because that was the place to raise a child and all that sort of stuff. And then another application was from our own zoning administrator. Retired law enforcement officer, paramedic type of thing. So we were kind of the young and the more mature. So we decided on going with what we had, what we knew what we had, or what we thought we had, in the form of Dave Ernand. I can tell you that from that point on, things in Shasbury have changed. For several years after that, we had, our budget was the same. He was finding money in reserve funds hidden away in certain things. We started working on the Howard Park, Cleveland Avenue, so on and so forth. He started writing grants. These grants were, 80% was paid, our 20% was just to have a workforce out there to do the work. He was getting so many grants, we couldn't, we had to cancel some of them because they were, we couldn't have manpower enough to do them. We started doing a complete audit every single year, and it just kept getting easier and easier. The last couple of years, we've been getting, everything's been going fine, we're just tweaking a couple of things, but these are things that, that we've got into a process. We have a schedule where we replace the trucks. We have the money to replace every truck in the foreseeable future, greater everything. It's, it's quite amazing. So we don't have to go to you and say, "Oh, we got to have a truck. We need another $150,000," something like that. This money is all the behind being put into place. The town garage, that was a major thing. Somebody had, somebody was there constantly. The doors are the wrong color, what color are the windows going to be, where's this, how big is the slab going to be, this sort. Dave was always there. He managed the coordination of making sure that everybody, every Saturday, could get to the recycling center with the road being torn up and everything else. It was a major project. If you want to see a vision of somebody, please go into Coal Hall. It is absolutely amazing what that looks like now. This is all Dave's envision and that sort of stuff. I just want to thank Dave personally very much. I'm sure that, selectman, appreciate you, and I wish that the townspeople would also acknowledge the great work he's done. Dave, thank you.
Tom, can I say one last thing?
Yes, absolutely.
I wish I'd said it earlier, but I mentioned the internet survey. For those of you who can't get to the internet, there are paper copies of that survey in the hall outside of here. Please grab one, fill it out, give it to me, or drop it by Coal Hall. If you can get to the internet, do it that way, but there are paper copies out there, and I forgot to mention that.
Okay, we're under other business. I had a call earlier from Benji Hewlett. Come right up here if you'd like to. What is this about?
The Energy Committee.
Energy Committee.
My name's Ben Hewlett. I've been, 25 years ago, I was elected as a justice of the peace, and I have been town agent and constable. And Aaron Kristowski, at some point, I've been town energy coordinator for so long, I can't remember how long I've been doing it. But last fall, Lynn Sternberg comes to my house, and she said Vermont 350 has to, we have to get this committee going, we have to get this committee going, and things got put off, it's fall. So the end of January, we finally had a meeting, and I knew everybody there, and I wrote Tim Skoggins' name down, and Mary Rogers was here, and Lynn and Pete. And so the other day, we had our first, February 21, and Cindy Morse was there. We had our first energy committee meeting. We haven't been approved yet by the town, but we named it. I asked them to name it, after a young man that went to this school from kindergarten to 12th grade, and was appointed to the Coast Guard Academy at Long Island, entered the Navy, got into flight school, and became a naval aviator. And last year, he was the squadron, appointed squadron commander. He's a full commander in the Navy. And on February 2, he's having dinner with his wife, takes a deep breath, drops dead at age 41. So we named it after him, the Energy Committee, and it's called the Robert Healy Eastman III Energy Committee. And we serve North Bennington and Shasbury. And we're going to be a little more organized before we ask permission and to advise the councils. But I'd like to introduce Bill Christian, who's going to tell you what our goal is.
Thank you. So a group of concerned citizens from Shasbury, North Bennington have gotten together, and we're, we're just getting organized, and we're looking for support and ideas and questions. We have a table out in back, and if you'd like to tell us what you think, we've got some, some free stuff on weatherizing and miscellaneous things. And we'd like to help the town, the town and the people of the town to save energy and money. So basically, it doesn't look like the climate's going to save itself, so I'm hoping that people will step, step up and give it a hand. So we don't have any, we don't have much of a focus yet, but we're hoping with your help, we'll come up with some good ideas and make some things happen. We don't have a lot of time to do it. I'd also, while I'm up here, I want to put in a good word for GBIX. I hope you fund it again, the way you, you have been, Shasbury. GBIX is the group that runs the Free Medical Clinic and the Emergency Food and Fuel Fund, the Kitchen Cupboard, and some other good things for Bennington County. And there are even New Yorkers who come over and participate. So if you can give them your support as well, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Tim, when will the second floor of Coal Hall be occupied?
The, the, the officers, the town officials are in their offices up there. Our first official meeting there will be Wednesday, the 13th.
If, I'd urge you all to take a, take a little bit of a tour. There'll be an open house at some point in time, I'm sure, but I didn't know they were going to do anything with the second floor of Coal Hall. I happened to be there a couple of months ago when the trailer arrived, and I was making fun of, of Dave moving all the offices out. And he mentioned I ought to go upstairs. I went upstairs and took a look at what was going on. You really need to see what has happened to the second floor of Coal Hall. Professional offices, done without affecting the, the historic integrity of the building. And I look at the garage, and I look at that, and I think, oh, my goodness, wait until we get our tax bills. But our tax rate, or our tax budget right now is at the 2015 level, is that?
It's, this is the first budget since 2015 that's gone over $2 million.
That's gone over $2 million?
About five and a half percent below the inflation rate at that time.
So we did our garage on a, on a bond, so to speak, as well as some sinking fund along the way. Coal Hall?
Coal Hall is on the annual budget that we brought it in from a fund that the Public Trustees have, the H.W. Office.
So without raising our budget. You really need to see what's, what's happened over there. Coal Hall has always been a really tough, tough place to put in offices. You know, it's kind of one of those things that you look at, we can't tear it down. It's one of those things where you say, "Well, that's all well and good, let's go build something else." Taking a look at that now, there's 20 years before we're going to have to build anything else. When they get it cleaned up outside, the garage gone, the town garage gone, and so on and so forth, it's really going to be quite a gem for this town. So I urge you all to go and take a look at just what they've done. We're under other business. Questions? Anybody want to, comments, speak on anything? Yes?
I'm asking questions from residents of Shasbury, members of the McCullough Library, which is supported by them.
You all hear from her?
Yeah.
I'll confirm this one.
Hello and good evening. I'm Jenny Rosicky, and I'm the director at the McCullough Library in North Bennington, which is also supported by Shasbury. Last year, the town approved a significant budget increase for the library, and I'm profoundly grateful and honored to have that support going forward. It was only to, it wasn't for anything fancy. It was just to make ends meet. We are not asking anything additional this year. We're keeping it level at 20,000, and we look forward to and appreciate your support. We had a record-breaking year last year. I have a whole sheet full of like really happy facts, and the results of our five-year plan. This is kind of everything we're planning to do over the next four years. Last year, it was approved kind of just after the meeting. It's everything that we have done and will do, and I have plenty of fact sheets. And I'm also pleased to say that after last year's town meeting and voting day, there was a significant uptick in the number of Shasbury residents who opened library accounts last year. So thank you for your support, and I look forward to serving you in the next year and hopefully many years to come. Thanks.
And Tom, if I may, I would just interject. That's one of the, the community appropriations that you'll be voting on tomorrow.
If you look at page 17, I believe it's item 13, right at the very top. Which brings me to tomorrow, at the firehouse, 7:00 a.m., 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. are the Australian ballot articles, which, 14, 15, 16, 17. I urge you to vote. Anything else?
Hi, Mike Lilly. I'd like to speak on Article 26 here, WBTN. They're asking for $5,000 just to offset operating costs. The electric bill's quite high down there, just for running the expensive equipment. I would like everybody to know that it's, it's our local radio station. Not a person working there gets paid a penny. It's all volunteers, everything you hear on there. And if anybody in this room wanted to go on that radio station and run their own show, they could do it, providing it's appropriate, you know? But anyways, they're just asking for your support for this $5,000, to, to help pay the electric bill and keep the doors open.
Yes?
I'd like to add on to what you just said. I'm Alan Baker in Shasbury. I have a radio show down there, and it's also as part of a civil defense to keep that running, because if something happened to all our cell phones, the satellites didn't work, someone hacked the electric grid, we have a generator. And if you have an AM radio with a battery, you can get information. And one of the long-term, one of my long-term plans for the station, we still haven't put this together, is to have a point person from every town, from every law enforcement agency, so if something like that did happen, they could come to the radio station, put out real news, not rumors like what happened during Irene, all kinds of weird rumors are going out. So you can get actual, real information in real time, because we can't be hacked. We have a generator. So, and as Mike said, you want to, you're passionate about anything, there's lots of room to run your own radio show. I can do it, anyone can do it.
Chris, Mike, yes?
They are in the process of putting in FM. They will have an FM station, they're about 10... They will have an FM station, they're about halfway there now.
There's cake in the back, but we can't get there until we adjourn. So if somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Who?
How about a second?
Sir?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go have some cake. Thank you for coming.